Welcome back to the Resident Appropriations Committee. We're going to be moving with our Comptroller's Office, who's going to have a brief presentation at this time. And for whoever's providing the presentation, if you can give that from the lectern, and then we can return to seats for questions. Thank you. And just as a reminder, just as a reminder for any agency representatives, please provide your first and last name and your position within the agency prior to speaking. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Okay. This might be a first for me. I don't know that I've testified standing before. Okay. We'll see if this works. Okay. Chairwoman McCray, Councilman Parker, Councilwoman Ramos. My goodness. Councilman Blanchard. I've been calling him Zach for over like a year now. Just realized I've never said the last name. Councilman Blanchard, good to see you today.
Mr. Comptroller, great to see you as well.
As is evident, I don't stand on ceremony a whole lot. But thank you for that. I'm pleased to be here as the comptroller to introduce my team. We have up in the first row, my Chief of Staff, Celeste Amato, my Deputy Comptroller, Erica McLamie. Over here, we have agency heads. I think we've got everybody. Actually, we have the Deputy City Auditor, Tandy Wong. Josh Pash is out for the holiday today. Director of Telecommunications, Simon Etta. Director of the Municipal Post Office, Charmaine Callahan. Director of Accounts Payable and Assistant Deputy Comptroller, Tim Goldsby. And Director of Real Estate, Eric Evans. We also have... I need to stop calling this the Employee Recognition Program. Michelle, what's your... Okay. It's like, Michelle came to us as Derekot, but she's now Michelle Coleman. She is our fiscal officer. And Casey Kelleher is our Deputy Chief of Staff. And we will be going through... I have to do this? Yeah, there we go. All right. This is our org chart. It includes the six services under the comptroller's office: Executive Direction and Control, Audits, Real Estate, Telecom, Municipal Post Office, and Accounts Payable. This is our agency overview with our mission and goals. As I have shared with the council in previous years, we in the comptroller's office like to think of ourselves as the chief accountability officers for Baltimore city government. The individual agencies perform support services mostly for other agencies of city government. And our operational plan, I guess you would say, is we try to make sure that the city is being as open and transparent as possible, especially in fiscal matters. And with our partner agencies and the administration, our goal is to help those agencies be as effective and efficient as they can with our tax dollars. You will often hear us talking, especially in the context of audits, that our goal is not a gotcha goal. Our goal is to help the agencies be the best versions of themselves that they can be so as to best support city government and its residents. Next slide. Service 130 is Executive Direction and Control. That provides oversight over all of our operational departments. It also includes our Board of Estimates staff. As you know, the comptroller's office staffs the Board of Estimates process. Starting this year, that we're in now, Fiscal '25, contract compliance and review, which was formerly known as pre-audits, has been moved to report directly to the clerk of the board. And so, in future years, will be shown as part of this service. Those positions currently are reflected in the audits department. And then... Okay. Service 131, Audits. Right now, you can see under the major operating budget highlights, this includes additional funds for plans reclassifications and hiring anticipated in the coming fiscal year. As I just mentioned, some of the positions in this service have been moved already to Executive Direction and Control. So, there are actually 38 positions total in 131, Service 131, 13 of which are vacant auditor positions. And let's talk a little bit about why that is. Last year, the committee asked us if our auditor salaries were competitive, and we acknowledged that they were not. The Department of Audits had gone decades without a regular salary study prior to our tenure. This increase, supported by a salary study that we requested, will help us get closer to that goal, but we still aren't there. We will be working with the administration to freeze four of the vacant positions and use those savings to increase the salaries for the rest of the unfrozen vacant auditor positions and several of the filled auditor positions. By increasing these salaries to be more competitive, we look forward to actually filling all of the unfrozen vacant auditor positions in the coming year. And then next year, we will be expecting another increase from BBMR for fiscal year '27, at which point he paused and looked meaningfully down at BBMR. And then, he returned to saying that that will allow us to unfreeze the remaining positions and increase their salaries to the new levels. The Department of Audits tracks the percentage of recommendations implemented by each calendar year. In Fiscal '24, we were slightly below our goal. We've been discussing with the council president's office opportunities for increased oversight hearings with the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission. And we are hopeful that this scrutiny will encourage and empower agencies to fully address audit findings and implement the recommendations that our team puts a lot of effort into making. All right. There we go. The Department of Real Estate Budget is adding a position for Fiscal '26 to bring our mighty team of eight up to nine. This position will be tasked with supporting the use of current data systems and analysis. By the way, in Fiscal Year '24, the Department of Real Estate generated about $1.3 million for the general fund, essentially paying for itself through the sales of tax sale certificates and the revenue collected from small cell applications. We expect that trend to continue through Fiscal Year '25 and '26. The Department of Telecommunications maintains its current level of service. While it shows up in the budget that there is a roughly $400,000 increase, that looks different because individual agency budgets have been adjusted to reflect actual spending trends for their telephones. The charge just brings the agency budget in line with current charges. It doesn't actually impact the funding level to the Department of Telecommunications. In the next fiscal year, we are looking to increase the percentage of help desk tickets that we resolve within 10 days by setting our sights on a 92% goal. Next slide. Service 136 supports our Municipal Post Office. The recommended budget for this coming year includes $250,000 to create Charm City Pass, which is a contract postal unit in the convention center. I think I talked about this a little bit at a council gathering earlier this year. But we launched this initiative late in 2024, but it was not reflected in the Fiscal '25 budget. Due to this new business initiative, we expect the output of number of pieces of metered mail to increase to 9 million in the next fiscal year. And then, last, but never, ever, ever least, we have Accounts Payable. The Fiscal Year '26 budget adds one position to the AP team to round out their staff to 10. We are proud to say that we have met our goal of taking only one day on average to pay invoices after the agencies approve the invoices. So, all of you are familiar with the city's reputation for having difficulty paying our vendors and our clients. We have reached the point where, while we still need to continue to work with our partner agencies in helping them have the most effective and efficient agency approval processes, once they get us that approved invoice, we can turn it around with a check or an electronic funds transaction within 24 hours. Also, after consultation with several of the agency partners, we are working to create a new EFT policy where we will be replacing paper checks with electronic payments of funds at certain levels of payment. So, there will not be a check option if the total amount is too low or too high. But we're still working with the agency to figure out exactly where those levels will be. And that's actually it for the presentation. If... We appreciate the opportunity for us to discuss the budget. And if you have any questions, we're happy to take them at this time.
Thank you. I also just want to acknowledge Councilman Antonio Glover from the 13th District for joining us for this hearing. We're going to start with... And you can take your questions from your seat. Thank you, Comptroller. We're going to start with Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think... Hey, how you doing? Always great to see you. I want to start by just saying thank you for all you've done for the comptroller's office and bringing it into the late 20th century? Late 20th century?
We're very happy with saying we have the flower of late '90s technology.
I will concur. So, I wanted to talk... I have two questions right now for this round about audits. And so, my first one is, with $6.74 million allocated for service number 131, audits in FY '26, what is the projected number of audits to be completed this fiscal year? And how does this compare to FY '25? And what, if it should see measures are in place to increase the audits throughout? Increase audits output per dollar spent? Not going to repeat that if you want.
I think I got it. I'm going to turn it over to the Deputy City Auditor for the details of it. But I will start with that last part and say, the audit staff has been understaffed for several years. And so, we expect to be able to improve output of the number of audits that we're able to do by actually filling all the positions once the salaries are high enough that we can actually get people to accept the positions. When that happens, we do already have draft plans to come back to the city council and ask the council to review the biennial audits program with the idea of adding some, as yet, unaudited agencies to that list. None of the courthouse agencies are on the current biennial audits list. I was actually asked if there was any reason we don't offer our performance auditing services to the inspector general. And I said, well, I would love to if we, you know, had the capacity. So, that would be another one that would be possible. But I'll turn it over to Tandy to talk about the specific details of the audits that we're already doing.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Councilwoman Gray, for the question. My name is Tandy Ma. I'm the Deputy City Auditor for the Department of Audits. Currently, we are doing the charter required audits, including actuarial financial statements, single audit, which is the grant audit, and then performance, biannual performance audits. Biannual performance audits can be counted as two audits because we are doing the current audit plus the follow-up audit. As of today, for the calendar year 2025 audits, we are on target. We are about one-third of the audits are close to the end and one-third, another one that is in progress. In terms of output cost, in terms of cost savings, we can really quantify the dollar amount. The reason is because of the nature of the audits that we are doing. For the performance audits, you know, we evaluate the programs and processes to improve the controls, to prevent the fraud, waste, and abuse, to increase the transparency, efficiency, and effectiveness. So, this, our audit review will increase the operation and reduce the fraud risk and increase the operational efficiency. But it is very difficult to quantify in terms of the dollar amount.
Okay. Are you able to, with time, give me a projected number of audits that you can complete this fiscal year? Or is that also hard to quantify?
So, are we talking about the calendar year '25?
For fiscal '26, as compared to '25?
Thank you, sir. So, at least I will say the charter required audits, eight performance audits, actuarial, single audit, so a total of 10 audits plus eight follow-up audits. So, I will say 18 audit reports.
Okay. And that's on par for what you did last year?
I'm sorry?
Is that on par for what you did for fiscal '25?
It is very stable. It is the required charter audits. But if we want to do more special audit as requested by multiple parties, we do not have the bandwidth to do that yet because we need to fill in multiple positions.
Okay. Thank you for that. And my second question, continuing on with audits. Considering the addition of two auditor three positions, what is the current auditor to audit ratio? And how will the new positions impact this ratio? First question, then, secondly, are there plans to further adjust staffing to meet audit demands?
If you don't mind, can you please repeat the first question? Because of the background noise, I did not get it all.
No worries. How will the new positions impact this ratio as far as the current auditor to audit ratio with the addition of the two audit three positions?
Bringing in more auditor three, more competent auditors, it will increase the audit efficiency. Currently, we are using different methods. You know, we are using the temp agency, and we are using them. And then, if they learn and if they can do the work, you know, we are trying to hire them. But bringing in more auditor threes and auditor two, I'm saying that, you know, competent auditors, that will definitely increase more audits. And we will be able to do more special projects as requested by multiple stakeholders.
If I'm going to get that correct, you said that you... Do you guys use contractors right now to service some of the audits?
Yes. Last year, we used three temp auditors, and then we hired all of them. And currently, we have three temporary auditors.
And with the addition of the two auditor threes, would that be necessary to still have those? Or would you get rid of those completely? And then, everything would be technically in-house?
Well, we have to go through the hiring process, which we are in the process of doing that right now. So, if we replace, if we hire three of these temporary employees, then we need to bring in three more temporary employees to do the current job.
Okay. So, we would still need the temporary employees just to help out. But adding the two auditor threes would just make it so we're able to just cover more as far as like special projects and just the bandwidth to handle more, to audit more agencies?
Correct. We will be able to do more work. Plus, you know, we will be able to... Right now, you know, like, we are doing less with more work. So, that will kind of release, you know, the button, the workload currently.
Thank you.
Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Comptroller Henry. Appreciate your great work for the city. Appreciate your partnership to this council and your thoughtfulness and diligence. I'm going to stay with auditing for a minute. I know one of the challenges that you were having in terms of fully staffing up was around salary and being competitive within the market. Can you talk to me and our council about whether this budget addresses that issue? What do we need to do in order to get your team fully staffed up? And I want to shout out Josh Pash. I think he does a great job. I have been really impressed in sitting on the Board of Estimates by the production coming out of audits. But I also know that you are understaffed and under capacity. So, talk to us about competitiveness in the market.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. As they say in the presidential debates, thank you for the question. I will not turn down an opportunity to talk about our strong working relationship with the Bureau of Budget and Management Research and how we are working with them right now on a plan in which the expectation is we will freeze a certain number of the vacant positions in Fiscal '26 and use the salary savings from those frozen positions to spread across the unfrozen positions and some filled positions and raise salaries to the point where we are more competitive in the marketplace and can therefore fill those vacant positions. Because that's been one of the biggest problems is it's been difficult to fill those positions when we can't offer as much as others can. But it's a two-part plan that that is how we will have the funds to hire some of the vacant positions in this coming fiscal year. But then, we will need an additional influx of funds from our partners at the Bureau of Budget and Management Research in Fiscal '27 to unfreeze the remaining auditor positions and raise their salaries up to the same levels.
Okay. So, just to encapsulate that, so what you are going to try... What you are looking to do is to take your excess pins and freeze them, put them into salary savings.
Freeze them. Not give them away to somebody else. Freeze them, yes.
Understood. In order to recoup that money, and then, you're going to need additional funds to catch up. That's correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. Please keep the council informed of that conversation with BBMR. Would very much appreciate updates. Making sure we are effectively auditing our city agencies is a key priority for this council. And I appreciate your good work. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go away from audits for a moment and go to the two items under the Office of Real Estate. So, the first is that I saw in the budget book that one of the outcomes is about, you know, tax sale certificates sold. So, that must mean that you're about to launch the lien program, which I'm going to recommend you do not do, actually, because we have INREM I, and we are about to have INREM II. And I think that the vendor lien program, while good when we needed it, right? It allows for developers to purchase the lien and that from the city, and then, they have to go through the process of foreclosing. Why not have us go through our very short six-month process to foreclose and provide that same developer, that same property? It's just going to be a lot quicker and more efficient. So, has there been those conversations to just like not do the vendor lien program?
Councilwoman, thank you so much for that question. Eric Evans, Director of Real Estate. On that note, what... Yes. The short answer to that, yes. There has been conversations as to, is this program worth the effort that we're putting into it? And that we'll go into it, given that the output, what we've been seeing is the data doesn't show that it's been very fruitful over the years. We are still working on, we do, we're actually almost finished with an agreement that would accompany the sale of these certificates. But hearing that sentiment, I would really like to explore that more. And you make a great point. And yes, there has been talks where we work closely with DHCD. And so, we do discuss this.
Yeah. Because when a tax sale fails, right? It doesn't sell at the auction, which means it's probably got a lot of high liens anyway.
Yeah.
It comes to you. And then, the issue then becomes, it's going to sit there for a while because the liens are high.
Right.
So, I mean, yes, I know of people who've been able to be successful with the vendor lien program. I just think that INREM is just more efficient. It allows for the owner to go ahead and just go ahead and foreclose because it's still a tax sale property. So, they still have to wait two years to foreclose. So, it doesn't, it makes sense to me to try to get as many properties in through INREM. And if you need me to help you with this, I will be happy to do so. It just makes a lot more sense.
I agree.
And it sounds like you all agree. Great. Okay. We're in. We got a plan. Okay. I'll be happy to help you with that. Go ahead.
I'm just going to chime in to say that we agree we should talk more about this.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Like, you've painted a lovely picture. I'd like to get into the details, but I don't want to put everybody else here through that.
Right. Because we could do it for many hours. And we're not going to do that today.
Right.
Yes, absolutely. But I am glad to know that you're willing to move forward in this regard. Okay. Great. Well, we'll take that offline. The second has to do with all these vacant lots The second has to do with all these vacant lots that are under your control. I'm going to also suggest that you transfer those out of your control into either DHCD, wherever it's appropriate, or Wreckin' Parks. And the reason for that is, is that, no offense, but you all aren't lot maintenance people.
No.
So what is the plan there? And obviously with DHCD, it makes sense because there's lots that we could be used for redevelopment. And then I've got a very specific case in a park that I share with Councilwoman Middleton where that could be a park.
So let me, I guess, grab that question for a specific aspect of it, which is, yes, we do not pretend we are lot maintenance people. It's unclear to me how much HCD are lot maintenance people either. My understanding is that it's DPW that is doing most of the mowing, right? So sanitation is responsible for cleaning dirty lots. If the concern is about how these properties are being acquired or distributed, then that would be a concern in terms of is our management of the lots up to the task? If the concern is that there are high grass and weeds, there are going to be high grass and weeds on that lot regardless of who has administrative control over it if the people responsible for actually going out there mowing and cleaning it aren't doing their job. So that's enough. This is another one where I'm happy to have detailed conversations. I am less likely to turn over administrative control to other agencies because the properties aren't being kept clean and mowed because we don't do that part of the work. But when it comes time to dispose of that property to a developer or a neighbor or something like that, that's where I want to make sure that the issue is, if there is a concern that real estate isn't being sufficiently aware of community or councilmatic interests, then I'd like to be made aware of that because I wasn't under the impression that those other agencies like HCD and Wreckin' Parks were being encouraged to acquire more property because they're doing a better job than we are at being responsive to the communities those properties are in.
Understand. It's two things related, right? One is there are, at least in my district, there are specific comptroller-controlled properties that are next to Wreckin' Park properties that should probably just be Wreckin' Parks for consistency and for uniform management, okay?
Or there should be ours, but we'll have to go.
Well, at least, well, we can have the conversation, I guess. And then there are others that could be part of our whole block process and our whole, you know, and our working with DHCD on making sure that there's, the whole puzzle is put together on a few blocks together so that those can be, I guess, strategically transferred at the right time. There is a larger issue of lot mowing that was brought up earlier today relative to Wreckin' Parks, but that we have just in general. I have way too many lots that are still unmoed from the beginning of the year. And so that is a major issue. But I'm really thinking through in terms of the advocacy of these communities wanting something to be done on these lots that could either be, in this case, the Wreckin' Parks, but I also see the value for DHCD to have them in order to really put the puzzle pieces together.
And, you know, we share a love and history of community development. So I would never be, want to be obstructionist to what would be the best for the community. And we would certainly be willing to discuss on an individual basis transferring properties in situations where there is already a conscious, intentional, community-involved effort to aggregate city-owned properties.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I think I added you to, Casey, I know I added you to this series of emails about the Roland Heights properties and what we call the wedge in that area. So, yeah, let's follow up with that conversation. And Tyler, I think the mayor's office should be involved with that as well. But I do think that we need to address this lot issue. So thank you, Madam Chair. I'll save my questions for the next round.
Thank you, Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and everybody from the office. Two questions for you. Ah, yes, you mentioned the significant progress made on the on-time payment, both in terms of the efficiency measure of one day, but also in particular the effectiveness, which went from 65 to 75. What's the, where are we at FY '25, do you think?
This is where I turn and look over at the Director of Accounts Payable and ask him what the most current figures he has.
Thank you for the question. Tim Goldsby, Director of Accounts Payable. Were you speaking to the?
Thirty-day from city receipt to invoice paid.
Sure. As it currently stands, the number is just over 40%. I'm sorry, the other way around. The number is 60% right now of invoices being paid within 30 days of receipt. I think there are a number of activities that we plan to delve into in order to get that number back to a place where we are more comfortable. In 2023, there was a concerted effort by the city administrator in conjunction with Accounts Payable where we examined 30-day, 60-day, 90-day outstanding invoices and worked hand-in-hand with agencies to bring those invoices to completion. And we're looking at resuming that effort in the coming fiscal year also.
Okay. I appreciate that. Mr. Commissioner, you had mentioned that this side is a collaborative effort between, and as you as well, Mr. Director, between your office and the agencies because it's about their internal processes and all the rest. Can you give an example of one of those agencies that has made significant progress? And what did that partnership look like? What was implemented that helped that agency do better?
I think we're going to let, we're going to let Director Goldsby keep rolling on this one. But I will have a comment when he's done.
Okay, sure. A specific agency that we could speak to is BHCD. In particular, you know, this is just one example of how we kind of get, are able to get down into the weeds when we understand that there are certain processes that could be better, deep within departments. So for BHCD, there's a particular program around doing in-home assessments. And the Office of the Comptroller and Accounts Payable had received many phone calls at the beginning of last year from folks who were contracted out to do the assessment saying that, you know, it's been four or five months and we haven't received a payment at all for the assessments that we've done. So we collaborated with BCHD's fiscal team and worked out a new process for the folks who are doing the assessments to be able to upload their invoices directly into Workday and also worked on just generally the workflow of how the approval process was going for that particular program. And not only were they able to catch up, but now timely payments are going out on a monthly basis.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. And the comment I wanted to make is, you know, we have had internal conversations over whether it is really appropriate for us to have that metric of the percentage done within a certain time, considering that Accounts Payable really is reliant on the agencies going through their approval process before we can cut that check. But I will say, because I know that you probably don't have enough people coming to you saying nice things about Workday, I will say that one of the things that we have seen different over the last two years as Workday has really sunk in and everyone is now using it appropriately is that in the past, and I mean going as far back as when I was also on the council, we would get complaints from people who would, you know, they call your office and they're like, "The city hasn't paid us. We've been waiting three months, six months, nine months." And you call the agency and the agency says, "Well, we sent an invoice over to Accounts Payable." And then you call Accounts Payable and they would say, "We don't have an approved invoice from there." What they wouldn't always say in the past was, "We got an invoice that was supposedly approved, but there was something wrong with it, so we sent it back to the agency and told them they needed to fix it, and then we never got it back." That still happens. But here's what Workday now allows is when somebody comes to us and says, "We haven't been paid and we sent the invoice in, you know, three months ago," one of the people in Tim's staff can just go into Workday and see where in the approval process it is and identify an actual person and say, "Well, your invoice is sitting on so-and-so's desk or technically in their inbox, and by the looks of it, it's been sitting there for 37 days." And then we can actually send an email to so-and-so and maybe so-and-so's superior and say, "This invoice is waiting to be approved." And we have seen a great deal of positive behavioral modification when those tools are now available.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. My second question has to do with best value contracting. We've had some conversations about this ourselves, and we had a really unexpected but really informative conversation with DPW in procurement, maybe while you were in the room the other day, but it was a long hearing. It may have been another time. Give us a sense of your office's involvement in supporting agencies and the Board of Estimates on that side of things in considering a best value approach to evaluating, scoring city contracts and following through on that. Where does that stand and what are we hoping for in the next year?
That is still, from my perspective, very conceptual. Our office has worked with the Council President's office and Purchasing to do some preliminary rubrics, templates for how that could slash should work. But, and I believe three, two, three meetings ago, the head of the Bureau of Procurement made a presentation at the Board of Estimates on where they're going with procurement transformation. I have not seen a specific timeline that shows when they plan to come to this council with the legislation that would be required to move from low bid to best value. I believe that would involve a charter amendment, and there would probably also be changes that had to be made in code. There will also need to be some rules and regs changes, but those are ones that can be done at pretty much any time. But we are still waiting for them to give us even a detailed draft to react to on what the charter amendment and legislative, other legislative changes would be. But I will say this because I've been saying this for four years. I think everybody is on board with the concept. The mayor, the council president, and I have all made very clear public statements together and separately about the desire to move towards best value contracting. I think this is one of those very common situations where the devil is just in the details.
Thank you, Director. And I do want to correct myself. It was a conversation with procurement, not with DPW. My conversations are melding in my head a little bit together.
But I have had conversations with DPW and they're excited about the prospect also, so, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Gray.
Thank you. Sorry to be a bug about this, but continuing on with the audits. Can the Comptroller's Office please explain how ensures agencies follow through with the audit recommendations? Is there a standard follow-up process or a public way to track progress? And also, can you point to any FY '25 audits that led to cost saving or improved operations? And how are those budget impacts from the audit findings tracked across agencies?
Okay, I'm definitely going to give it to Fanny for a little bit of the last part. I will start by saying that I believe the cliche is "You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink." Like, I can put that water in front of you and I can tell you it's cold and refreshing, but if you don't pick it up and drink it, it's not really my fault that you didn't. And so we have, one of the things, and these have been in several of these briefings where I have encouraged the, I have encouraged the actual formal audit report, make some recommendations, not even to the agency that's being audited, but to the city administrator because sometimes when auditing one agency, what we find is that two or more agencies are not working together as effectively or efficiently as they could be. And in that, in the same sort of way, we make an effort not to recommend that one agency require another agency to do something because that's not fair. So along those lines, I'm happy to turn the rest of the question over to the deputy city auditor because I'm in, and also I will note in advance, I am intrigued by the question of whether audits is capable of projecting savings from their recommendations being followed or is that something where we just would not have the data to figure that out in advance? We just have to see if they did what we asked them to do, does it somehow cost less? But my suspicion, based on having now read a lot of performance audits over the last several years, is that most of the recommendations that we make are about getting the agencies to not waste time and money, not waste time and effort. And while there is a cash equivalent or a cash value to that, that's really hard sometimes to pin down exactly. Getting to do more in the same amount of time, you can back out a cash value for that. But the reality is what was improved was more service for the residents without having to spend any more money.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And then if you want to, I'll turn that over to the deputy city auditor to see if there are any specifics in there that we can add.
Thank you, Councilman Gray. In terms of the follow-up processes, the City Charter requires us to do the follow-up audit while we are doing the current audit. So to give you a short answer, every other year we do follow up on the findings and recommendations that we wrote two years ago. It is my understanding that City Council is in the process of bringing in agencies in the biannual audit oversight committee hearing that will increase the agencies to make sure that they are on track with their recommendations. In terms of cost savings, the impact of our audits are not only dollar amount. It is also the qualitative measures. So I'm going to divide into, generally divide audits into two major audits that we are doing. One side is the financial audit. So annual financial audits, we provide the opinion on whether financial statements are reasonably stated and free from material misstatements. So you can qualify how much dollar that we are saving, however auditor's opinion is around the reasonableness of the financial statements. For the performance audit, our goal is to increase the transparency, efficiency, and effectiveness. Again, you know, it is more than the dollar amount. I do not have the data to give you how much money that we saved last year, but I can give you an example. So for Department of General Services funeral audit that we did two years ago, we found that there were transitions used by the former employee's funeral card. They were like $20,000 to $30,000. If we made the recommendations to improve the controls, if the department implemented the recommendations as we recommended, you know, that will save more than $20,000. It could be millions. It could be multi-millions. You know, we cannot quantify. So I am sorry that I do not have the answers for the cost savings.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess you kind of answered the, what changes have been implemented to optimize the workflow and reduce, basically, if your recommendations were taken, then you wouldn't be able to quantify it, but it would just make for, the audits would improve. I guess it would get rid of the redundancy and improve workflow and save fiscally.
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you?
Good afternoon, Chair McCray, Vice President Middleton, and members of the council. My name is Shamaya Kearney. I'm the Deputy City Administrator for the City of Baltimore. Just wanted to weigh in on some of the conversation around audit recommendations. So as you may recall, during the CAO's hearing, she talked about the restructure of the city administrator's office with a particular focus on grants to management, on corrective actions, both for our performance audits as well as for the act firm for the single audit. And so we are very, very focused on corrective action plans and working with our agencies around those corrective action plans. Accordingly, we've started a tracking process with those recommendations, again, from the performance audits that are conducted by the comptroller's office as well as the audit recommendations that are coming from our external auditor. I check in on a regular cadence with our city agencies on the status of implementation and to ensure that there is intentional focus from the city administrator's office on ensuring that we correct those findings. I'll note, of course, especially for things that that pertain to city processes and procedures and things that are related to finances, that those things don't change overnight. But there is intentional focus on those issues within the city administrator's office, and we will continue to work with our city agencies until we get to a better place.
I love to hear the synergy. Thank you. That was the, the one question. And then, secondly, just, I guess to follow back up on the mowing, problem that we have across all agencies. This is the time where it becomes an issue, obviously, because we're in spring, summer. And this is where we find a lot of the city-owned vacant lots and land parcels overgrown, and folks are frustrated, and everyone's just pointing fingers like the, like the Spider-Man meme. Would the comptroller's office be willing to take a more proactive role in ensuring mowing contracts are executed effectively? Potentially through auditing vendor performance, setting seasonal compliance metrics, or creating a dashboard of city-maintained properties?
Well, since you brought up Spider-Man, I, I will, I will, I will stick with that metaphor and say Spider-Man is the entity who introduced into popular culture the idea that with great power comes great responsibility. We have no mowers. The comptroller's office has great responsibility for the things we have the power to affect. If, if, I will check, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna confirm with the director of real estate. We pay DPW to mow our properties?
Actually, yes. We pay forestry for the trees and...
Oh, that, well, forestry for the trees, but for mowing vacant lots?
And mowing is DPW.
Is DPW. So, so we just, and, and, and we pay them when they invoice us after they do it. So, I, I, if, if, if you're asking, would we join you in nagging DPW? And when necessary, Wreckin' Parks, in, in, in mowing and trimming the, the, the greenery that's on our properties? We will, we will be happy to, but did this issue come up in DPW's hearing? Like, you said, you did talk about mowing, okay? So, I, I wasn't there to hear the answer, but is there some expectation that DPW is going to improve its overall mowing capability such that when they are responsible for mowing city-owned property, some of which is under our administrative control, some of which is other, under other agencies' administrative control? We need them to do it well and right, as, as much as you do. So if you, if, like, if you're, if you're asking, would we join with you in encouraging that better performance? I would say sure. But if you're asking, will I take ownership of the need to have it done better? I would say no, because we're not the people who mow.
Okay, and, and CAO is here.
See, I even told the mayor that you head off this afternoon.
I guess my follow-up will be with you is, do you see that, if there's a need for the comptroller's office to, to be there to do audits of our, of our mowing operations, especially the, like, in-house outs, and the ones that we contract? To see if there's anything that can be improved?
Of course. So, we actually spend time on mowing during CleanStat, which we have, I think, bi-weekly. So, I want to spend some time talking a little bit about the coordination and the process that occurs. And then I want to pivot to the question that you asked and the request that you have put forward, yes?
I, I think I can save you that by the realization that I think I misunderstood the councilman's question. Are you asking if we would audit?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay.
Sure.
That, that, I missed that. So I think you don't need to be answering the question.
Well, shit, I mean, shit.
I'm here.
I, I, because I can just say, we would be happy to put that on the list of specific processes that we would work with DPW to help them improve by auditing their mowing?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Sure. I think, so I think there's a little more context that we should offer. So mowing isn't done just by one agency. There are multiple agencies that have internal crews that mow, and they have responsibility for different plots of land. And then there are also contractors that support our mowing operation as well. And there's one contractor in particular who supports a significant number of, of plots of city land on both the DOT, DPW, and BCRP side. Now, to talk a little bit about the auditing process, so within CityStat, which you all, I think, are meeting with the CityStat, the OPI team, a bit later today, they actually have two inspectors. And those inspectors' jobs is to go out and actually inspect, you know, the work that is being done. So whenever the work says is done in 311, we send inspectors out. They evaluate whether or not that work is done. We actually went through a process, and I can pull that information for you, specifically around the mowing contracts. Because we went through, I will, I will confirm that this actually happened, but we actually went through a process by which we started auditing some of those mowing contracts. And we started taking pictures and then working with the procurement office so that we could, so that we could share that information with our vendors when we were not satisfied with their performance. A part of the issue that we had years ago, when we were trying to shift, you know, add additional capacity for other vendors to come in, is that we actually had not properly gone through the protocols when we were not satisfied with performance. And then obviously, there's an opportunity for the vendor to be able to go through and cure. And so we have been doing that process of going through, making sure that the edging and the trimming and all of that work is done. We take photos before and after. We go over those in CleanStat. And then when necessary, we send that information over to the procurement office so they can start to document when there are performance issues with our contractors that are doing the work. So happy to engage with the comptroller or members of this body around concerns that you all might have with, with mowing. The other piece of this, and this goes to your point about like a public-facing dashboard. So there, we have gone through a process where we started to look at plots of land and ownership of said plots of land, to be clear on who is responsible for each plot of land. Right now, the main source of that is CodeMap, right? CodeMap kind of tells you who the respective property owner is so that we can ensure that Wreckin' Parks knows that this is your plot of land, that DPW and DOT knows that this is your plot of land. So that is the mechanism by which we determine ownership. I will confer internally with the team to see if there's an opportunity to create a dashboard or something public-facing where, where anyone can go and look at ownership and the dates that, you know, properties are going to get mowed. So I'm happy to have more dialogue with you about what that could look like.
No, I appreciate that, because I think we've had conversations before about the legal dumping and just the bane of my existence, and just how, depending on where it is, it has to go through the process. And we have to, and, and I know, I know we're streamlining that, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Save that question for OPI, because we have a pilot on a legal dumping that they will tell you all about.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Awesome.
Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on that last piece of, thank you, Mr. Comptroller, for you and your team and all that you do. Just to piggyback on the last conversation, I know that you're, the city is kind of in transfer of some of the parks that maybe was at the comptroller's office. And, and most recently, a park that I acquired through redistricting. And the park was in the 14th district, now in the 6th. And, but it belonged to the comptroller. And then there was some movement where there, you're trying to transfer that ownership so it can be on a consistent mowing basis for the, for the community. So I guess some of that is in motion.
I, I, I was just excited to hear that I have a park. Which, which, which park is it that is?
Correct.
Is, is, is the, the real estate has administrative control over it?
Well, it, it's technically not a park.
Oh, it's not a designated park?
It's not a...
It's a green space that's being treated as a park, but on the city's records, it's just a vacant lot.
We actually passed legislation to call it Marcelec Park.
Oh, well, if you've called it...
Here's one of the plots is Wreckin' Parks. The rest of them are the comptroller's office.
Okay, well, if you, if you, if the council has designated it a park, we should give it to Wreckin' Parks.
That's why we, we...
And I've acquired that park, I guess.
So that's why we suggested that.
As, as much as it was enjoyable to momentarily own a park, you know, we have a Department of Recreation and Parks, so yeah. So we will, we will work...
That's an instance where I guess, you know, upkeep, because the, at the end of the day, it's the residents that want to see that these parks, you know, mowed on a regular basis.
We will, we will be happy to do whatever we need to do administratively to consolidate that property under Recreation and Parks.
So my question, your office is a revenue-generated office. And first of all, I, just watching you firsthand, I commend you on areas that is going through economic redevelopment. You have buildings that you, in the area, that you work hard to try to sell and do a development plan for. Do, do you have a continuous plan around the city to help with those public-private partnerships of vacant schools or, you know, buildings that people have been renting for 20, 30 years? Do you? And I bring that up just kind of because we, you know, we've had Zooms on some of these things in Park Heights. And you're, you're, we're both learning different things. And I think that those partnerships are so important within the community. Have you, is there a plan where you want to have updates and so on so you're not surprised at some of the things that are happening within all these development areas all around the entire city, really?
I will continue to, to thank the council for these, these questions. I don't know that I would say that our office has a detailed plan of how we want to be doing these things in different neighborhoods around the city. What we have is, we have the properties, and this, again, you know, referring back to the wisdom of Stan Lee, we, we have the, we have the properties that frankly, the administration has given us. Some institutionally, like how we get tax sale properties after they've gone through the, the tax sale process. We get the certificates that have already been through the processes run by administrative, administration offices. And in the case of the, the buildings and the larger projects that we work with the council people on, those really only happen when the, the mayor's office proactively works with us to give us control over that particular project. So we don't have a wide portfolio of those kinds of, those kinds of projects. And so that's why we rely on the individual relationships with the council people to help us with the projects in those districts when they are ones that come under us. And, you know, one of the things that I have made a conscious effort to, to do, and I, I believe is another shift, that an attitudinal shift for the office is, because I have a very clear bias towards the importance of the city council in the running of Baltimore City, we have made a very conscious, very intentional effort to try to gather input from council people about projects that are happening in their districts. And we, frankly, we rely on the council to provide us with an accurate assessment of community engagement. Because I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm a citywide official, but I'm not going to pretend that I know the inter-neighborhood politics in every district as well as the council person for that district does. So we really rely on working with you and all of your colleagues to make sure that when we're doing a project with city property, we are doing it in a community-appropriate fashion. So when you ask, to pull this all the way around, when you ask, do we have a plan? We don't have a top-down plan of how we expect to manage these projects around the city. What we have is, and, and a motivation. We have a, we have an attitude of we want to work with the council person and their communities to make these projects be actually effective community development efforts.
So a number of these projects go through the Board of Estimates. So are you saying you need more collaboration with the mayor's office?
Well, I can't imagine ever saying no to more collaboration with the mayor's office. But I'm saying that the, the collaboration for a lot of these projects either comes at the very beginning, where the mayor's office says, okay, you handle this. And we do. If the collaboration did not come then, then they handle that, you know, that project, either through the BDC or HCD, or depending on the specific project, DGAS, DPW, like any, any of the large agencies that already have a measure of development capacity. It's up to the mayor's office to decide who they're going to use. They have a, they have a toolbox. And in that regard, we have made a conscious effort over the last four-plus years to offer the Department of Real Estate as one of the tools in the toolbox of Baltimore City for getting the more complicated development deals across the finish line.
So I'm just feeling you, you're saying that you rely, you rely on us. There needs to be a reliance on, with people in the mayor's administration that deal with real estate as well for, I guess, needed information within each community?
That, that, yeah, that's, that's, that's an easy one. There is, there is, there is, it's always going to be better for city government and for the people of Baltimore if, if we all work together to come up with the best possible outcome.
Which is very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to be going to Councilman Mengray. And also, we were joined by Councilman Jones from the 12th District.
Last question. Given what's happening in the federal level with the post office and deconstruction of just a lot of federal agencies, are you guys having any conversations around how you want to support or pivot the municipal post office should the post office grind to a halt? Which can happen at any second.
Okay, well, I will be turning this over to Charmaine Callahan from the municipal post office to talk about how the municipal post office already works with the US Post Office. But I, I will say that we do some, you know, we do what we do, hopefully, in partnership with the US Post Office, but regardless of how well the US Post Office is or is not performing its responsibilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Charmaine. So with that, I'll turn it over to Charmaine to ask if, if you want to talk a little bit about how we liaise with the post office, and maybe you want to share a little bit about the coordinating council, because most people don't, don't even know that that's going on.
Hi, Charmaine Callahan with the municipal post office. Thank you for the question. The municipal post office partners with the USPS. There's a committee, the Greater Baltimore, Greater, well, it's the Greater Baltimore Postal Services, where we, where I'm a member of the, on the executive board. We partner as far as the services, the communication services with the mail delivery. So currently, the issues with the post office, the operational issues they have is like short staff, the short staff, delay with the mail, which has little impact, actually, with us for our internal services, because we actually pick up our mail from the USPS. So the citizens of Baltimore do receive their mail in a timely fashion with little or no impact. I guess you want to be talking about the board, the governing board, the city relationship with the USPS, let's see. United Service continues to be a critical partner in our citywide mail delivery strategy. As of May 2025, the USPS Board of Governors comprised of Amber McReynolds, who's the chairperson, Derek Hand, a vice president, one, two, three, four, five, six, six members, actually, Doc Toledo...
I'm so sorry. Could you put the mic a little closer?
Sure.
I'm having trouble here.
So the, where'd I get to, Ronald Straven, Roman Martinaz, these are all governors and vice chairs that sits on the board. On May 9, 2025, the USPS Board of Governor announced the appointment of David Steiner as the 76th Postal Master General and CEO. Steiner is a former CEO of Waste Management and a FedEx Board Member, is expected to be formally assumed the role in July, pending the completion of necessary background and ethics checks. So this is like a new postal, what is it, postal master for the USPS that is being in place in July.
Okay, so, but with the impending, or hopefully not, if things were to slow down, or if they had their wish, get privatized, you guys have, you guys have processes in order to be able to navigate that?
When you say if, if, if the U S Postal Service, either its operations slow down because of the way it's being run...
Yep.
Or if they privatize the entire operation...
Yeah, what's your game plan?
What?
Your game, what, like, what are we doing as a municipal post office?
That, well, that, I, I'm gonna look to Charmaine to correct me if I'm wrong, but that wouldn't affect anything we would do in terms of the municipal post office. Most of what the municipal post office is doing is about gathering the mail from inside city government and providing a point of, like, one point of contact to get it into the U S Postal Services process. And the reverse, picking up the mail from the USPS and distributing it internally. So USPS is going to do what it's going to do, and we're going to get it to them, and we're going to get it from them. And if they're not good at doing what their part is going to be doing, we're all going to suffer. But there won't be really much in the way of, like, we're not going to suddenly start trying to deliver mail outside of city government because the U S Postal Service isn't doing a good job of it.
Definitely understood. Yep. Thank you.
Thanks to the comptroller and your team. We are going to be recessing. This hearing will be returning at 2:00 P M. with Charm TV.